President.
Thank you.
Okay, if we go ahead and stand, please, for the pledge.
Ready to begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. At this time, I'll open the meeting for oral communications. Anyone in the audience wishing to address the planning commission and speak on any item within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission, you can come up and speak. Please state if you wish to speak on an item on the agenda, and remarks should be limited to not more than five minutes. If it is an item on the agenda, you might want to wait until it comes up, but beyond that, you're free to come up at this time. Okay, seeing none, I'll close the oral communications, and we'll note that...
Mr. Andre was a couple minutes late.
And he's here. Okay. So now we move on to approval of the minutes.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Didn't I just see the minutes?
No.
I'll second.
I thought they were up here. All right. Consent calendar, we have none. Public hearing, item seven. This is a conditional use permit for a health fitness facility. Can we have a staff report, please?
Good evening, Chair DeBolt and members of the planning commission. So this is consideration of a CUP for a health fitness facility that is located at 10958 Los Alamitos Boulevard, which is basically next door to the Shoe City, which is on the corner of Los Alamos and Cattella. And I'm going to kick it over to Tom to provide you a report on the CUP. Thank you.
And Chair DeBolt and members of the planning commission, the applicant is here with us tonight. He's Jerry Wetzel. He's sitting in the audience. And Mr. Wetzel asks that the city permit a large martial arts business to move into a mini mall structure in the two units for the former dry cleaners and shoe repair businesses, which are next to Shoe City at the corner of Los Alamos Boulevard and Cattella Avenue. And the classes will generally have 15 students. The proposed use is a large facility because the unit is 3,000 square feet, which is over the 2,500 square foot maximum for a small fitness facility, which would have been permitted, but this is a CUP because it's larger. The business name would be Centerline Jiu-Jitsu and MMA. The applicant has been teaching for 23 years and has been conducting full-time business since 2001. He has had previous locations of this business in Long Beach and in Bellflower, but is combining them together here in Los Alamitos. The hours of operation for the business would be between 4:00 p.m. and 9:00 p.m. Monday through Thursday, and Saturday mornings from 11:00 a.m. to noon. And there would be only two teachers, and the class size would be approximately 15 students. Those times are subject to, he can change those because in the CG zone, you're allowed to be open from basically all day. So that's why, I mean, even though it says 11 to noon, that seems like a short time, he's able to work longer than that if he becomes a more popular school. The building has its own parking on the parcel, which is owned separately from the town center plaza, which is next door. The health fitness facility's large requires one parking space per 200 square feet of the unit. And at 3,000 square feet, that means it needs 15 spaces. And in the building, there are 39 spaces altogether, and with all the different businesses that are there now, it will be 39 if you approve this business. The applicant will be required to ensure that the business complies with the noise ordinances of the city. That's in your resolution. And staff has reviewed this land use for consistency with the general plan, municipal code, and believes that the findings that are inside your resolution tonight can be made in this case. And therefore, it's recommended by staff, and that concludes my report.
Okay. Do we have any questions of staff?
I was just curious. It mentions in the staff report, it says about the parking, it says that they encourage people not to park in spaces that these businesses feel are their own parking spots.
Yeah. They're not assigned certain spaces within this parcel. But they have taken upon themselves to paint signs on the back of the building. You'll notice they're there. And cleaners used to have it, but they've painted over it now that they've left, so, yeah.
I mean, really...
But they're picking their own spaces is basically what they're doing.
That is a separate lot, so those spaces really are that building's spaces.
They are indeed, yeah. Yep.
Any other questions?
I have a question. Is the landlord planning on doing any improvements to the outside of the building?
Not right now. They haven't told us anything about that. There are currently no code enforcement violations on the building, so we are not enforcing any changes to the building.
Okay.
Yeah.
I got a question.
Yes.
Since it was a dry cleaner, was that done onsite or done in any sort of remediation necessary for health and...
That's a good question. I don't know that. Yeah, they're not required as part of a CUP process to do an environmental check, so I'm not sure. And nor could I even speculate about that without seeing an actual report from somebody on that, so.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, I'll open the meeting to the public if the applicant would like to come up, if they have any, like to give us a little presentation on what you're doing and...
I didn't rehearse all songs, so I apologize. This is actually the first time I've had a meeting like this in the 23 years I've been running the building, mainly just because when I moved into Los Alamos, I think it's all a little bit different than the previous experience I'd had. I've been gradually working my way here. I started in 2001 in Bellflower, then technically we're in Long Beach, but we're right over the hill on Wardlow and Norwalk or Los Alamos. My kids are Weetabix kids. They're both in my high school right now. Actually, I'm chief of Los Alamos Educational Foundation, teaching jiu-jitsu. We're in five of the...
All right. Five of the six schools in the district right now, teaching both Muay Thai and jiu-jitsu in there. So we were very excited when the opportunity came up. We weren't sure if the gym was going to survive COVID. We were closed down for about eight months in 2020, and then it was just kind of kicking and screaming, trying to get our way back up. About midway through last year, once everything started to open up a little bit more and a little bit more, parents were flooding kids into the gym, which was nice. They were just wanting to get some kind of exercise. And it's been steamrolling since then. So when this opportunity for this facility came to, and I could finally move my gym into Los Alamos, so that the parents who are in my after-school classes can actually bring the kids right over to the gym, I jumped at the chance. So I hope you'll take that into consideration, and thank you so much for hearing me out on all of this.
Great. Any questions of the applicant? Anyone? None? Okay. Go ahead.
So it mentions here about you run an after-school jiu-jitsu bully-proof class.
Yes, sir. That's what I teach with Los Alamitos.
I'm just curious, if you're being bullied, depending on what size you are, so did you just punch the kid back when you're being bullied?
No, especially, well, it has its merits unless the kid, who is a bully, was raised in and around violence, and usually they're much more comfortable with violence than the one they're bullying, which is why they chose that child specifically to bully. So that's why I chose it, even though I teach, I mean, I work with military and law enforcement as well. But when it came to what I teach children to do in schools that's defensible, that won't get another child hurt over silly playground disputes, won't get the parents called down to the office, it's much easier for them to, if they're being bullied physically, and we articulate the difference between verbal and physical, and they have to do something to protect themselves, they can put them on the ground with as much velocity as they can control at that age, get on top, hold the kid down, and let the teachers come in and do what they're supposed to be doing anyway, which is control the situation, protect the kids. It's not up to them to do more ballistic stuff because accidents happen, children get hit, and they fall, and they hit their head, and now you've got somebody in a hospital over something silly, over like a ball or something. So instead of punching, we usually have them take them down and control them.
Gotcha.
Then, as they get older, they learn to do other things in there.
Great. Thank you.
It would say it's more about submission, you know, holds, right?
Positional dominance first, and then submissions if necessary. But they have the ability to control it there, and it works outside their weight class.
Right.
Sorry, now I'm talking shop, so... I actually came from my gym to here.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Is there any member of the public who wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the, to the public. We'll come back, and anyone would like to make a motion or...
Can I ask a question? Noticing the addresses, how will that be, will the addresses stay as two or what?
It will need to be one. It'll, if he were to leave in the future, would go back to two, the ones that exist now, but it will become one address, and that address will be the one that's in the staff report.
So that the CUP always travels. Would this be a problem or...
No, it would cover both units. So, yeah, there could be a large martial arts place there in the future, or other health facility.
And that raises a question that I have. Keeping in mind that the CUP runs with the property, if the business were to leave and another martial arts, can it be limited to martial arts, to what we've approved today, or is it any type of health and fitness?
That's probably for the city attorney to answer that question.
Yeah, I'm scrambling, looking through the conditions to see if we've specified that the use would be limited to martial arts.
Oh, no, I did not specify that it would be limited.
That's something we can certainly do through the planning commission's action tonight if you want to be clear about the particular type of athletic use you're permitting there.
My only reason for bringing that up is that if the business were to leave, and this is approved for a health fitness in the broad sense, not that we would have a 24-hour fitness-type setup there, but we may end up with something that does not have classes, or, you know, it's a free-flowing gym, to speak.
We could, yeah.
Yeah. So I think it might be wise to add another condition that this be limited to the martial arts and to the description that the applicant has given us of his business.
I was just, I don't know, let's look at the other side. You know, it's not that large of a facility. It'd probably be hard-pressed to have that type of a, not that it couldn't, but it'd be more hard-pressed, but I mean, you could think of something like a spin class could go in there, boxing, like other types of non-martial arts but class-related type of physical fitness stuff that could potentially go in there that you would now kind of limit in a way.
Can that be changed? So can each, can an applicant come in with that?
If I could just jump in, looking a little bit closer at the materials, we do identify it as a large martial arts dash, or I'm sorry, like fitness-martial arts use for the premises, and then part of your materials also include a floor plan that would appear to be specific to this intended use. So I would imagine that if another business were to come back in the future and want something different, they would need to resubmit, clarify the scope and extent of the CUP and the floor plans, et cetera.
Right. Sounds good. Okay, so do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the recommended action by the staff on, for resolution number 2022-02. We need a roll call? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Opposed? None? You're all set.
Good luck.
All right. Okay, moving on, this is item 7B, zoning ordinance amendment permitting the keeping of female chickens, hens in residential zones. Can we have a staff report, please?
Yeah, so as the planning commission is aware, last month, we came in for a discussion on keeping live fowl in the city. And so we presented and discussed that, and so we presented several options from other jurisdictions in Southern California. And so at the direction of the planning commission, we are coming back with those recommendations here as part of the ordinance to keep live chickens in the city. So I'm not going to go over every single one, hopefully, but we are here to answer any questions.
All right. Okay.
Chair.
Go ahead.
I'd like to speak.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I was absent last month for the discussion, the meeting, but I did watch the discussion online on YouTube, so I'm assuming I'll be allowed to discuss this and vote on it unless counsel says otherwise.
Absolutely.
I was watching the presentation, and it was, the discussion like launched immediately into like a tacit approval of permitting these fowl in the city. There was discussion about how many coops and runs and things of that nature, but there was no real discussion about the real issues, which are density and nuisance. I don't think there was any talk about anything related to that until Chair DeBolt spoke about 60-foot lots and flies. So again, the discussion was almost like a complaint hearing where the immediate decision was against the complainant. It was almost a tacit approval in favor of the respondent. So if that's the case, if it was generated by a complaint, which I think there was discussion that it was generated by a complaint, or assumed generated by a complaint because our building safety department doesn't go out and, or code enforcement doesn't go out and look for this, so we're assuming it's generated by a complaint. And the discussion had testimony or discussion with a resident that was very knowledgeable about chickens. I mean, this person knew about chickens. She knew more than, she's forgotten more than I know about chickens. I know like 399 at Ralph's, and I buy my eggs at Costco, so. But this woman knew everything, right? She had custom coops. She knew everything. And if we're going to experience a complaint by the gold standard of chicken keepers, what are we going to experience when we get Joe Pedestrian trying to keep chickens out in the yard? I mean, I think we're headed down the wrong path here. And, you know, again, we need to talk about density and nuisance. And when you talk about density, Sacramento, the legislature's been ramming down these requirements, ADU, second round of ADU, arena numbers, almost removing the R1 zone. So we're going to have, every plot in this city is subject to be in a multi-unit parcel. So how are we going to, now we're going to try to shoehorn chicken coops in there with chicken runs and multiple families, and I think, I don't think this has been thought out properly, and I don't think it's a wise idea, and from a density standpoint. Now, from a nuisance standpoint, it's our job to maintain the quiet enjoyment of the people of this city. And I don't see parking chickens in the backyard, which bring flies, and flies bring roaches, and roaches bring rats, and we're all concerned about coyotes, and I'm sure if coyotes get away from these chickens, they're going to be checking out the opportunity and maybe pick up a cat or a dog as an appetizer in the way. And so I really think that putting chickens in our backyards is really not to foul the fowl the... So that's my, that's my take on it.
All right.
And again, you know, it's alleged they're going to be pets, and I don't know what pets you keep in cages. I mean, you know, I got a dog, he's not in a cage. I got a cat, it's not in a cage. I don't have a cat. You know, you can argue maybe a parakeet, but I think that's just like a novelty wrapped in responsibility, so.
But a dog is in a cage. It's in your house, or it's in your backyard.
It's not in a cage. He's in my house.
Well, but a dog is meant to run free, right?
He can run. He's got a door. He can go out and run around and come back in. So am I.
Technically, he's, right. We all are. I'm just saying, technically, that's, you know, that's what you define. I mean, the idea is, and I...
He's not in a coop, okay?
I agree with that. But I also think that in our discussion, we did talk about nuisance. We did feel that chickens did not create any type of additional nuisance. We haven't seen an extraordinary amount of flies. I have flies in my backyard, and I have no chickens. And every spring and summer, I get this group of these little tiny flies that come every year and have no chickens. So that wasn't it, but we did talk about that nuisance. We also talked about density and property, which is why we allowed only four, and, you know, a certain distance from property line. So I do feel like we did do our due diligence in protecting the neighbors, and I think as a group collectively, we didn't feel that that was actually going to be an issue. So I would respect your opinion, but I feel like we did cover some of those things in that meeting.
Yeah, yeah. And the discussion devolved into discussion between miniature horses and ponies and tortoises and turtles. So, I mean, it hit bottom, man, and I don't know. I just feel it's a bad move. I'll be voting out, but you can vote how you want.
I think we tried to figure out what that nuisance was or what that complaint was. I think we had a hard time coming up with that, what it was. Do you know what I mean? I mean, what the driver of the complaint was or the nuisance was, as we tried to look towards the nuisances and what would happen with it. And that's what we struggled with. We kind of struggled with...
Yeah, we didn't discount that person's complaint. We couldn't, they weren't here to defend it. I can know that. But we didn't, we didn't discount it. We took, tried to take it into account.
Yes, you did. I just said that...
Well, why don't, why don't we do this? This is a public hearing. At this point, why don't we open it to the public? If there's anybody here that would like to speak to this issue, then this is the time to come forward and speak to it. If you could give you...
My name is Marlene Wagner. I was the voice behind the knowledgeable chicken woman. I don't know what I'm going to add now, but I can just say, we have the chickens already, and they have, they're just, it's a weird thing, and maybe, we don't have flies. Like, we just don't have flies. We pick up after our chickens twice a day. But the funny thing is, we went out of town, and even if there's like fresh dumpings that they went to the bathroom, it doesn't have a fly on it. It's the weirdest thing. I mean, we have a dog. Immediately, the dog goes to the bathroom, there's flies. We went away for the weekend. The chickens have a huge thing of water. They have self-beaters, and so we left them. So we're just saying it dries up super fast. We couldn't even find the poop to pick up when we came back. Still no flies. And we didn't even pick up twice a day because we were gone for a night to see our son at college. So I don't think flies are an issue, just from experience. I haven't seen any. We live on Cherry, which is right by the base, so we have had, well, one year, we had 14 gophers destroy our yard. We've had rats and mice in our house before we had chickens. We were trapping, right now, behind my couch, behind my hutch, I have a trap because the dog comes in, leaves the door open, who knows what comes in. This was way before we had chickens. We just live in a place that has those things regardless. Additional, I doubt it, because we fought it. The neighbors, I mean, the exterminator little people cars are up and down our block. So it's not that they don't exist already and we're bringing something to the neighborhood. What else? I don't know. They're super fun. They're cute. They, the neighbors behind us, when we got the chickens, they're the ones who said, oh, we could start a petition. Do you want us to start a petition? We're like, ooh, we never thought about a petition, but we'll see if we get to that, and we could go up and down the streets, and they never even knew we had them. Right directly behind us and catty-corner, the first people we ran into walking our dog never even knew we had them. So it's not like everybody knows you have them in the neighborhood and they're super noisy because you don't have a rooster. They do make a cackle when they have an egg. I mean, it's, I'm not going to lie. They do like to announce that they did this wonderful thing, and they laid an egg. So it's really quick. They lay their egg. It's not like a barking dog when their parents leave and they want to be in all night and nobody's home to let them in, that bark for hours down the street. They just make this little noise. It's in the day. They sleep at night. You don't hear them all night because they're up tucked in bed. So I don't see the nuisance. Obviously, I mean, I have them, but I'm honest to say, we would not be disruptive to our neighbors. We're super respectful. Like, that's not who we are. We're not trying to torture anybody. We're not trying to, you know, be a nuisance ourselves. Like, we love our neighbors, most of them. The one next to us, it's not that we don't love them. They just like to, they've called on us before. We had a trailer in the driveway that they didn't like, and, I mean, it's just, they've called on us before for other things. It's 10:01, and the kids were out in the summertime in the street. The cops came by and said, you know, hey, we just got a complaint. It's only 10:01, but, so, they're going to complain on us. So we're not doing anything bad. We have really good kids. They just like to have fun, friends over. And the chickens are just not a nuisance. So I don't know what to tell you. They're just a good addition. They bring so much. We've got to share our eggs with all the neighbors. They love it. Brought them into work. I mean, they're just, it's super fun to be able to share such a, I don't know, organic good egg that has this really orange yolk. So, do you have anything else?
No, that's fine.
I don't know what else to, you know, I totally get it because, I mean, we don't want to be a pain, and we don't want to be a nuisance because that would make us feel bad, and we just, we wouldn't want to make everybody else inconvenienced for something that we would want. It's not fair, and we get that. But we did a lot of research before we got them. We know people in the city who had them, so we didn't know the extent of the illegality or whatever, because they do exist here. They just don't get ratted on. So, yeah, I don't know. That's kind of where we're at. Anybody else have anything?
Okay. Well, thank you.
I have a quick question for, since Commissioner didn't know what the nuisance was. Are you aware of what the nuisance was?
I am not. I just got the notice on my window that said, you know, it's a nuisance and violation.
Complaint was?
So our code enforcement division received a complaint. I don't know exactly what the complaint is. I'm assuming it's just keeping of chickens, because at the time, keeping of live fowl in the city is prohibited.
So the complainant just found a city code in which there was some legal issue and said, hey, there, so there was no actual nuisance or noise complaint that you are aware of or...
Yeah, I can't answer it because I'm not aware of it.
Or anything? Okay.
Correct.
Thank you.
Anybody else? We should comment?
I'd like to add, no gophers.
No more gophers. If that were a possibility, you can't keep gophers.
No gophers as pets?
Yeah, you can't keep...
No gophers in my yard. I know, I lived on Chico, too. Lots of gophers. Lots of gophers. Couldn't get rid of them.
Right. I'll just comment. I, I've been giving this a lot of thought, and I'm trying to look at this in the broad sense. This is citywide. Okay, it's not isolated to Cherry or the Highlands or any one area. This is a citywide, would be a citywide ordinance. And I am going to vote no on this because we're not a rural community, and in my opinion, there's simply not enough distance between the housing to, you know, to mitigate, adequately mitigate unintended natural occurring issues like odors, like flies, like noises, or other issues that, you know, are, or may be associated by us allowing someone to keep barnyard animals in a residential area. I'm looking at it in a broad, broad citywide, trying not to pick on one person who doesn't write, I guess that would probably be the, you know, and trying to adjust everything based on that. And as, as probably impactful is the statements of the member of the public that came forward, I think in a broader sense, I think, I think it's not a fit. And so, anyway, that's my comment. I will add, just commenting about in the resolution, if it's going to pass, if there was going to be a change anywhere, I think that the 20 feet from a residence is adequate, but I do believe that everything should be kept within a setback at least, I would say at least five feet from the fence. That would be coops and everything else, setback at least five to 10 feet, because if you're up against a property line, if you're up against a fence, you're up against... up against a property line, if you're up against a fence, you're up against the property line. If that's the direction it's going to go. But, anyway, so, if there's any further discussion, we can go ahead.
I have a quick question, for Michael and Ron probably. So, if it does get approved, and somebody is a bad chicken owner, I mean, can't code enforcement still go out, even if it's approved?
Exactly.
We can still enforce if they're not taking care of them properly?
So, they would be required to adhere to the city's nuisance provisions, noise ordinance, et cetera. The proposed amendment that's before you tonight has some standards that would be enforceable as well, in terms of spacing, number of animals, the prohibition on roosters. Those were some of the items that were discussed at the last meeting, intended to prevent, I guess, undesired results here.
Okay. Because, I mean, initially, when this came up, I was thinking, "This is insane. Who has chickens in Los Alamos?" And I asked my sister, who lives two houses down, and she said, "Her next door neighbors had had chickens for four years, and she never knew they had chickens." I'm like, "Oh, I walk by that house all the time, I never knew they had chickens."
I mean, it's just, I mean, your analogy is essentially saying, we should probably not have dogs in the city either, because they create nuisance from barking, they, people take them on walks, and they do their business on people's lawns, and then they don't pick up after them. You can get odor from somebody's backyard from not taking care of their dogs. It's really no different. If the code states that they have to do it a certain way, and they're not, then they can't have them.
Right.
And it's the same with the dogs. If somebody complains that a dog's continuing to bark, and it's in the code that you can't have this dog continue to bark, then that issue has to be taken care of or resolved. And that's the same way this is. So, there's so many other benefits to having chickens, just, like children alone, that live in the city that don't get that opportunity. We're not saying to have a farm in your backyard. We're talking about four chickens here. And for a kid to actually get that experience in the city, get actually organic eggs that are extremely healthy for them, natural, I mean, you know, not going through farms where they're fed, you know, steroids or other chemicals to make them grow faster and lay more eggs, and all the things that they do, there's just a ton of benefit. And I don't, I don't really see the negative with the way that we've written the code. So, just putting that out there.
So, I have a question for Art. When you were considering, considering as a city as a whole, and, you know, not just on Cherry Street, and so on and so forth, what was your thought process behind, was there a certain area, maybe a certain place where you just don't think it would be a good fit? I mean, where was your not a good fit? Because even if it's not on Cherry, at any other residential home...
Well, I don't know that, I'm looking at this broad based, I mean, our lot sizes are 65 feet wide.
Yeah.
And, you know, the Highlands is probably the same, or 70 wide. Might be a little bit deeper.
Yeah.
I mean, different all over town.
Right.
Okay. And this is a citywide ordinance.
Right.
Okay, so it's not, it's not like, it's not like, it's not like it's going to be limited to just to the people on Cherry, or down in the carrier row, where we have probably the largest lots, as a tract, but...
Yeah, but if they don't meet the requirement, they can't put it in.
That's what my thought process was.
If it's a smaller lot, they can't put it in.
With the 20-foot requirement...
The only requirement is 20 feet from a residence.
Right.
Which is fairly significant.
Some of them might not meet that.
And frankly...
Well, going side to side, front to back.
And frankly, I don't even know if I have a house in suburbia states, I think from my back door to the back fence is only 26 feet. So, we're talking, we're not talking about a whole lot. I don't know if I would even be able to do it in my yard. So, it is going to be limited scope to the people who could have it with 20 feet.
Well, it's 20 feet from, not 20 feet from the property line, it's 20 feet from a residence.
Right.
So, your wall...
So, that's what I'm saying, from my residence to my back wall, or to my neighbor's back wall.
Well, to your back wall. If it's 26 feet, then up against their wall that you share, they're far enough away.
Right, but if you're also implementing the possibility of a setback...
I would say a setback, so it's not right on the, but even then...
So, I'm just saying...
I hear you, I hear you.
...decrease the scope a lot, where there will be probably 50% of the properties in the city that will not be able to keep chickens, because they won't be able to satisfy that group at all.
Let's be honest, there's a lot of people that don't want to keep chickens anyway.
Right.
I don't think this is like, I don't think this is going to be a widespread issue, where we're going to have, like, chickens, like, taking over Los Alamos. It's not going to happen.
Yeah, that's fine.
There's always Irvine, you can move to Irvine.
Good. Okay, so do we have a motion? Or one more comment?
I was going to make the comment, just to kind of reiterate some of the things that we heard tonight. We are going to have problems, no matter what, with rodents, with coyotes, whether you have chickens or not, because people leave out food and water that brings them in, and we can't get that part of the citizens here to stop putting out things that will bring in coyotes. So, we're not going to be able to solve that problem and worry about it with chickens. So, I can appreciate how anybody feels, but I don't think chickens will be the driving force of the coyotes, or anything. I would love to see us not have that problem. And the gophers, welcome to my city, my area over here, it just looks like potholes all over the place. I'm surprised that with the amount of gophers we have, we don't have the coyotes over more often, because I would have thought they would have gone after those. So, I don't think worrying about, a few chickens here and there are going to be the driving force of bringing all these other things in. But I do think there's merit to us trying to always look to the future, and we're trying to be more organic, we're trying to do better with our trash and whatnot. So, we're trying to do things that are more aligned with what society is growing toward, and I do think the chickens are a part of it.
Yeah, sounds good.
Not the coyotes you've got to worry about, it's the hawks. Never had a problem with a coyote. Hawks will come after your dog.
Tried to pick her up off the ground. All right.
I'll make a motion.
I always get the bad rap, it's the hawks that should get the bad rap.
Can I add that, I just want to clarify here, that the motion, I don't know if you want to add that motion, what your suggestion was, was the coop?
That'll be up to the maker.
Okay, copy that.
Up to the maker of the motion.
I'm happy the way it sits right now, so it's up to everybody else. I'll make a motion, and then I'll leave it up to the...
Okay, I'll second it.
Okay. We have a motion, we have a second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
No? Okay. Motion passes. Chickens it is.
No eggs for you.
Yeah.
No eggs for you. How do I build my coop? You're going to have to go to Costco to get your eggs, I'm sorry.
All right, okay. Okay, so, I wasn't counting the chickens before.
That is true.
All right, okay, so let's moving on, to, this is item eight. This is a discussion item, of the, a public discussion of the housing element. And, do we have a staff report on that? Are we just going to...
I'm going to kick this over to Tom.
Okay. Remember, tonight is an open house. This is a friendly forum for the public to talk about this item. And we, you as members of the planning commission can also talk about it in an open house? Correct. So, you know, you're able to do that. But, it is an open house for people to talk, and we want to be as friendly as possible about that.
Okay.
I want to add, since we have a new commissioner here, Commissioner Zilmer, is the housing element. We've been undergoing this process for the last several months. We've already submitted our draft up to the state, and we've received comments. And so, this is, again, like Tom said, is a forum to receive comments. So, again, we have to do this as part of our plan update for addressing, correct me wrong, like, one of the aspects is arena numbers, correct?
Right.
Right? And then, so again, it's, again, we've been doing this several months, and then, again, we received comments from the state, and we're in our noticing to receive comments, period.
All right. Okay, so, in light of that, I'll just go ahead and open it to the public, for anyone who is wishing to ask questions of staff regarding the housing element, and that the city is in the process of reviewing and sending to the state. So, if anyone would like to come up and make...
Could I mention one more thing, too, is that, in the future, you will vote on this, and you will have a discussion time, of course, later on.
Right, okay. And then, if we could, we'd like to limit the comments to no more than five minutes. So, if anybody would like to come up and just speak in general, you may.
I brought my...
Tom, I think Les brought a PowerPoint, can you throw that up there? Good evening. My name is George Void, and my business partner, Matt Waken, and I are part of an investment group that purchased the site from the government at 4665 Lampson, back in December of 2021. First, we want to acknowledge and recognize the significance of the undertaking that all of you, staff, and council members have put forth to date, to get the housing element update where it's currently at. We understand there were quite a few meetings similar to this, and a lot of community outreach that took place leading up until now. The government obviously wasn't an advocate for the site, they were completely indifferent throughout the process. It was held through an auction, and until we were the high bidder, we really didn't have an opportunity to come in and speak meaningfully as an advocate for the project. We reached out shortly after we became the owner of the site, Les Johnson is a consultant who's helped on our behalf, and we've had several in-person meetings with Chet Simmons. They've all been overwhelmingly positive. Staff's been really, really great to work with. Les has had numerous conversations, I know with Ron and Tom, over the last few months, about the housing element update, the response that the state provided to the city, and about our site more specifically. You know, I'm also a business owner here locally in town. My kids have had the great fortune of attending schools here. All three of my kids went through McGaw, McAuliffe, I've got two boys at the high school. My daughter's still in eighth grade at McAuliffe. So, while we obviously have a strong vested interest in seeing a good financial outcome on the site, we also care deeply about the legacy and what we feel is most appropriate and harmonious with the surrounding community. And in looking at the density that's been assigned to the site currently, without any modifications, and we asked our land use attorney, Scott Burkey, to kind of put together some points that he put together in a letter, that were sent to staff, along with a couple of site plans, that depict a rendering of a site plan that we feel is most appropriate for the site, and alternatively, one that contemplates meeting the density as it sits now, 372 units. And I'm not sure how to work this here, but...
Just... Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Well, I guess I'll have to press it for you.
Okay, well, thank you for your help there. In order to achieve this level of density on this site, you're looking at a four-story product, that's transitory in nature, and is essentially an apartment complex. And, you know, not only do we feel like that's not ideal in comparison to our site plan that we'll toggle through here momentarily, but with this four-story height just in and of itself, surrounding the College Park East community and everything else that's surrounding the site, it just feels overwhelming and far from what's most compatible and harmonious to the area. And we feel like this type of project is likely to have significant opposition from residents who surround this site. And, obviously, an objective, I think, of everybody who's a stakeholder in this process is to see a project through that's not only one that can be successful and actually get built, but also one that is most harmonious and compatible for the site. If we could maybe toggle to the next design, that's an elevation of what it would look like. So, this is our site plan, that we've taken great care and consideration in crafting. It's a mixture of two acres on the west side of the property, that we contemplate donating to the city, in an effort to provide 73 low and very low income affordable housing units that the city, obviously, has been mandated to provide as part of this housing element. And, you know, one of the only ways that this can even pencil or work from an economic perspective, is to bring in an affordable developer, who we brought in early in this process, to help us with the unit mix, bedroom counts, kind of getting to the point where we realized that donating the land was the only way to really make this viable, for them in turn to be able to go and qualify for the other bond and tax credits at the state level that will make this project work and actually come to fruition. The remaining 10 acres, or 10.3 acres, consists of 55 small lot, single-family homes. All of the homes that are oriented along Lampson are two-story in nature, which is consistent with everything else around the site. As you get into the center and rear of the site, some of the single-family homes have a, kind of a three-story component, to allow them to be a little bit larger, in terms of square footage. And then, the yellowed units that are on the east side and rear of the property are all three-story townhomes. Nothing on the site exceeds three stories in height. You know, we really feel that, aside from the height and the density being more appropriate, it's an opportunity for young families to have pride of ownership, and, you know, fostering a sense of community that we all know just isn't quite the same in an apartment, transitory type environment. This is, you know, an opportunity for families, generations really, of people who grew up in this community, come back and raise their families in an entry-level, single-family home or townhome, that they can be proud of, and have their kids have the same opportunities that mine did, which is to go to world-class schools. And there'll also be members of the community who will eat at our restaurants and support our local small businesses. And we just feel, in general, that this site design at 226 total units is just far more compatible and far more appropriate for the site than the 372 units that are currently being asked to satisfy the state's housing element requirements. And with that, I'd like to introduce Les to come and talk a little bit about some of the suggested amendments that our land use attorney incorporated into the letter that we'd sent out. Appreciate your time.
Well, good evening, Chair DeBolt, commission members, and esteemed staff. I don't think I ever thought I would be at this position of standing before you like this. It is an absolute pleasure to be in front of you, and thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening regarding the housing element update. I know how difficult of a task this is, and especially with this cycle, the state has made it extremely difficult. But, being one that's gone through three cycles myself of having to do this on this side of the counter, if you will, I know how difficult it is. So, I certainly commend you for the efforts so far, and, again, it's a task that goes without much fanfare and interest of the community at large, yet it's critically important due to the state mandate that comes with that. It's almost impossible in a community like Los Alamos to try and accommodate 769 units. That's a tremendous amount of units. I think that's probably more units than this city has seen built in the last 15 years. That's including everything that was built by Olson and Hutton. So, it's a, a large task at hand. But, the development being proposed by the owners of the Lampson site, they're trying to provide a project that they believe is appropriate in density and in size and in overall character that fits Los Alamos. And I know that seems counter to the directive that we've heard from the state and what they're imposing upon all the jurisdictions throughout the state of California, but it's very rare to have a developer that actually comes before... very rare to have a developer that actually comes before a municipality asking for a lower density than what is being identified for a piece of property, yet that's the case here today. So the project, as was identified by George, includes a mix of small lot detached, attached townhome products and workforce housing units as well. And one of the biggest challenges that we see in fulfilling the REIT obligation is, of course, the workforce housing or affordable housing units. It's all too often pretty easy to have market rate units added. The infill that occurs throughout the community will add a unit here or there, but it's rare, extremely rare, that unless there's some type of an incentive or program in place, it's very, very rare to see anything affordable come in without that being identified, and yet you have a situation here where developers bringing that forward. Tom, if we can maybe move to the next slide. Thank you, sir. So with this particular project, they're proposing to build 73 qualifying, affordable qualifying units. And that really is representing a pretty good chunk of the REIT obligation that you're facing during this cycle. So this one project alone would provide close to 25% of the low and very low-income units and also fulfill almost 30% of your city's REIT obligation with one project. So that only happens, I guess, with this particular developer if there's the ability to reduce the density, the minimum density that's been identified in the draft housing element for this site. The minimum density is identified at 30 units to the acre, and what you're seeing, what George presented to you, is considerably less than that. Go one more slide. Thank you, Tom. What has been identified to you tonight is a density that's under 20 units to the acre. It's actually about 18.6 units to the acre. So it's about a third less than what has been identified in the housing element. And so as a result of that situation, go one more slide, Tom. Thank you. We're asking that the draft housing element be amended to lower that minimum density from 30 to 20 units to the acre. Now, that results in, the numbers don't go away, as you all know, it's really having to shift around. Where do those 124 units, I believe that's what that comes out to be with that difference? Where do those 124 units go? And so rather than just asking for that to be reduced, we've tried to come up with some ideas and suggestions for your consideration that were identified in the letter. And there's two sites that we've identified that we believe would be more appropriate for those additional units. The first one being Arrowhead. If you recall, Arrowhead and Lamson both were identified at the same density of a minimum of 30 units to the acre and calculated accordingly. We have 12.4 acres at the Lamson site, and I believe it's 11 acres at Arrowhead. Yet there are two entirely different locations in regards to its location, built environment surrounding it. At the Lamson site, you're limited to Lamson as your point of access. There is some sidewalk, but it's not really a pedestrian-friendly environment at all. So it's not walkable to amenities or services or any schools. Yet the Arrowhead site has all of that. It's with walking distance to elementary, middle school, high school. It has bus service that seven days a week is serving that site or in proximity, very close proximity to it. It also has services and jobs that are within walking distance of the site. So we've identified actually a 40, I believe it was increasing the density minimum from 30 to 45 units to the acre, but actually, I think it could even be lower than that. It could be at 40 units to the acre, so a 10 to the acre increase. That 10 to the acre increase brings in 110 units. So of that 124-unit difference that I mentioned earlier, with Lamson dropping down from 30 to 20, 110 of that can be taken care of with the Arrowhead site. We also identified another location, and that was one of the sites within the town center area. As you probably know, most of the town center sites were not identified, even though a 60-unit-per-acre density was identified, most of those sites were not identified with a calculation at that level for a variety of reasons, and I'm sure a number of those are very valid reasons, especially with the state requiring you to identify they have to be feasible. But there at least is one site that we looked at that we believe should have additional units identified or be considered for adding units to it, and that was Site 2B, which is a 3.1-acre site. It only currently identifies 28 units on that site, but if a density of 45 units to the acre were identified on that particular location, you could accommodate 111 additional units right there on that one site. A third point that we wanted to mention is that the housing element itself identifies a surplus of 41 units. So right now, you have 810 units identified within the document, and yet the REIT allocation is for 769 units. So we believe that one or two of those sites, it's some modifications occurring with Arrowhead, possibly Town Center, or a mixture of those, combined with the surplus of units identified currently in the housing element, would justify being able to reduce the minimum density on the Lamson site to a more realistic, feasible density of 20 units to the acre. So with that, we respectfully request your consideration of this. And with that, that would conclude our comments. And if you have any questions or would like to discuss it further, we're more than willing to do so. Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone else, any other member of the public that wish to come up? And?
Good evening. My name is Todd Cottle, and I'm with CNC Development here to speak on the same topic and the same item. CNC Development specializes in the production, financing, ownership, and management of affordable housing, or as we like to reference as well as workforce housing throughout Orange County. Been in business for the past 20 years, providing housing options throughout Orange County, and we're working in conjunction with the Lamson team, as George had referenced, on looking at the product type, the density, the design, and are really excited for this particular site about the team's commitment to creating multiple housing options at multiple price points for the residents of Los Alamos. And would encourage the city to support the comments that Les had just shared about the request to reduce the minimum density for the overall project and the overall site. From our experience, reducing this requirement will provide for flexibility in the future in ultimately designing a community that's going to be successful, and the next step that we have to take as developers of affordable housing, applying for funding sources up at the state level, and ultimately will provide for an overall development that's compatible with the surrounding community. And like to thank you for this opportunity.
Any other member of the public that would like to come up?
Good evening, council members. My name is Tony Close. My wife and I have been residents and business owners in the city of Los Alamos for over 20 years. We are aware of the density requirements that are currently being contemplated for this project on the Lamson site, and we have had a chance to review the alternative plans that are being proposed. From what we see, both personally and professionally, since we are owners of a mortgage lending company and understand the need for many different housing options across the state, it's our opinion that the alternative lower density is more appropriate and complementary to the surrounding areas of the site. We also feel a pride of ownership development versus a transitory apartment project would be far greater contribution to the city in the long term. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Scott Fayette. I want to speak, first thing I'd like to acknowledge, and I really appreciate you trying to reduce the density of the area, because if you know the character of that street, four stories is not what is anything around there. So I appreciate the owners and the contractors trying to reduce that. I also want to say that I looked through the agenda, and the only thing I could find for the planning was this wonderful city centrescape. Fantastic, tons of pages, colors, different alternatives, absolutely fantastic. It looks wonderful. I couldn't find anything of an overlay, no link. You mentioned the housing plan, but there's no link, and there's no way I couldn't find it. I do have some familiarity with going through agendas and trying to pull out that information. So it's a little disappointing that we couldn't, as a member of the public, actually pull up that overlay and find it easily. And I mean, no links, no anything. It's mentioned, but you can't find it, or I couldn't find it. Concerned about losing Arbor Park, concerned about losing the Dart Park, I don't know what that overlay looks like with losing those two pieces of open space. I do agree with the owners of the property. It's only going to be feasible if they can make money, and I really appreciate them going to all the effort to reduce that density, because that will fit much more in character with Seal Beach and the surrounding, College Park East, Parkwood, and those estates. Thank you.
Any other member? Okay.
Hello. My name's Tom Lent, and I'm the president and CEO of Southland Credit Union here in town. We're a billion-dollar financial institution, and we employ 160 employees. And I also am a 26-year resident of College Park East, very close to this site, right off of Heather and Lamson, so it's very close to my house. I'm aware of both plans, and I am much more in favor of the reduced density plan. From a business standpoint, we make mortgage loans and homes, single-family homes. We can make loans, help our business, and also it'll help the community, and we are just much more in favor of the lower-density plan. So thank you very much.
Hello, everybody. I'm Randy Hill. I live in the Highlands. And first of all, thank you very much for your service. I respect very much what you guys do, and I do pay some attention. These people we're talking about, they live here in the community. They do have our community's best interests in mind, I do believe, in addition to obviously making money. It's a business for them. I think the project on Lamson is kind of a, I look at it as a windfall for the city. And if it is, if they're able to take advantage of this use, which does include the more limited density, I personally think that Lamson is not conducive to 30 units per acre. I think there's no sidewalk, the street is very limited. I do think accessibility is an issue. I don't like the idea of 136 one-bedroom apartments over there, things like that. And I think the concern with Seal Beach is important, because we have to get along with our neighbors, and I do feel like this project will help that. And to me, if we can get this project in as opposed to saying, okay, it's either, you know, the 30 units per acre or hit the road, then you're probably going to end up with some type of office building there, and nobody's going to come out ahead if that happens. And in my mind, that's 226 units you can bite off pretty easily. I also do believe that the more dense locations would be acceptable on Cotella, where we already have big buildings and, you know, we already have, the Cypress side is building up like crazy. So I just feel like it would, it would almost, I shouldn't say unnoticed, but it would be different. And I feel also that we currently call, I'm going to call it Cottonwood Cove. Javier Mejia always likes to call it Cottonwood Cove, and that's apartment row, and I think that's kind of a derogatory term. Well, I wonder what this would be called, you know, 30 units per acre, all on an island by itself. So I do believe that it would be a win-win for all involved if we were to do that. And on a side note, if I did have either apartments or houses there, and I had a gopher problem, I would suggest that, for me personally, when I put barbecue ashes in those holes, I no longer had any gophers. Thank you very much for your time.
Good to know. All right. Anyone else wishing to address the meeting here? Okay, I'll bring it back to the Planning Commission. Before anybody make any comments, I think this is not a, this project is not a specific item that is on our agenda that I think we can do a deep dive into with respect to zoning and density. And I think we'll have the attorney talk a little bit more about that, but I would like, at the end of this, at least to request that the staff, if we can get a motion to do it, to maybe agendize at another meeting, our next meeting, possibly, a review of the density standards and recommended for the proposed R4 zoning that has to do with the affordable housing, and then how that relates to our housing element and the state mandated requirements, so that we could take another look at the density and have that as an agendized item, so we can fully discuss an item like this or a proposal like this in light of a density review. So the attorney would like to follow up on what we can talk about without violating our.
Sure. So staff agendized the meeting this evening as an opportunity for the public to come in and provide comments on the current draft of our general plan housing element update. The city is periodically required to update its housing element. Part of that process is that we are required to plan for the provision of certain numbers of residential units within the community. The intent of that is to help address what the state has determined to be a housing crisis. Every city throughout the state has been assigned a particular number. In our case, as was noted, the city of Los Alamos is required to, through its housing element update and subsequent zoning, provide for the development of 769 new housing units within this next planning period. And so part of what we're discussing in terms of the densities that have been provided in the draft document really is how the city hopes to meet that target number and where that density should be allocated throughout the city. So again, just to recap, this was agendized by staff as an opportunity to get public input, to receive exactly the type of comments we've received this evening for the Planning Commission's consideration. I understand you may want to make a motion that would bring back an agendized discussion item that's more targeted specifically to this R4 zoning concept. And then even aside from that, there will be additional opportunities for deliberation and public comment as we move forward, ultimately seeking the Planning Commission's recommendation to approve and move on with the general plan update, which would then go to council for approval, and then ultimately be certified by the state.
With that being said, I would like to make that motion that we agendize, possibly for the next meeting, if we can have it, a review and a discussion on the proposed density range, minimums, that we're proposing for the R4 zone, and that we have an opportunity to take a deep dive into that and with discussion and possible revision or whatever.
Anybody write down that motion?
Yeah, that's a rambling one, but they've got the gist of it.
All seconded. Whatever it was, all seconded.
Before we move on, I'd like to add that we should have a representative from Tarrano over here for that discussion.
Absolutely.
All right. You want to comment? We have, I think he made a second. We have a second, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on that? Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. All right.
I'm fairly new, and I want some clarity on this. Where's this town site 2B or town square? Town Center 2B.
Los Alamos and Cotella.
Are you talking about the TCMU zone, the Town Center?
Well, you said there's alternate zones for where we can allocate other places. I'm familiar with the Arrowhead location.
So it's Los Alamos Boulevard Cotella, right? So if you go down Los Alamos Boulevard, it's from Farquhar to Florista. And on Cotella, it goes from, what is it, Walnut? Chestnut, Chestnut to, not Pine Street, Reagan Street.
They'll get you a map on that.
Would it be okay if we got him a copy of it, what we did on that?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, moving on. This will be for item nine, the findings required for continued use of teleconferencing for meetings. So if we could have a staff report on that real quick.
I can provide that if you're all okay with it. So again, this is required pursuant to AB 361. During the pendency of the COVID pandemic, the state has allowed for legislative bodies to meet remotely via teleconference as desired. bodies to meet remotely via teleconference as desired. It's not an obligation that we do meet in the virtual format, but by making these findings, which are required to be made every 30 days, the Planning Commission preserves that option. So in the event, heaven forbid, there is another upswing in the pandemic that requires teleconferencing and/or we have single members who are unable to attend but would like to participate virtually, by making these findings, we preserve that right.
Okay, so, either have a... Okay, so anyway, I'll make the motion that we make the necessary findings to continue the use of teleconferencing.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, moving on again. This is, do we have any items from the Development Services Director?
Yes, I want to see if, Tom, you have any items?
Yeah, I wanted to mention, we've been asked a question many times about the Chevron that's being built. It is not going to be a service station where they fix cars or anything like that. It's just going to be a little shop.
Is that across from the racetrack?
Yes.
That one?
Yes. Rumors have been flying that we were going to allow cars to be worked on there.
I thought it was a car wash.
They wanted a car wash.
I was ready to find out what's going on. Are we doing a car wash or something?
Another one.
Yep. So I just wanted to say that at least on television here, too, so people could hear that, so.
So it's just an expanded mini mart? Because they only got like a little shop.
Yeah.
I would have to think they're going to actually have to tear that down.
Yes, they are. Yeah, the machine gun emplacement, yes, they will tear that down.
I have one item, Chair.
Go ahead.
You have a postcard on your, that we gave to you on the diocese about our Parklet series. I'm actually going to bring the Development Services Manager Irving Montenegro up to give you a little bit further explanation on the Parklet series. But this is the first, what you have is kind of like a save a date that will go out citywide. And then we'll get more information as we get closer to the date with, we're actually doing a citywide door hanger, as well as our social media and our weekly email blast. But here's our Development Services Manager, Irving Montenegro Jr.
Good evening, Chairperson, members of the commission. As Ron indicated, that's the Parklet Series postcard. There will be additional publication that will be provided to the community with more information, details on what to expect, what we call each night event. So the Parklet Series is an effort to activate Pine Street, draw attention, economic drive to hopefully draw more folks into, from the community into that street. We've identified that Pine Street as a possible vision for a downtown area that kind of follows the vision of the Town Center mixed-use, you know, plan. But more importantly, in the present, we want to obviously draw attention through various events. And as you've come to find out, there's been recreational programs there in the past, historically through Winter Wonderland and other events that recreation puts on. So we're sort of piggybacking on that model and offering a four-week stretch of what we're calling a Parklet Series events, consisting of a concert on Thursday nights, Fridays on, I'm sorry, Friday Flix is what we're calling the Friday Night Series. And then Sidewalk Saturday, that will essentially be a farmer's market with vendors on site. So we're hoping to have your interest and attention to come out and support the program, as well as the community. And so you'll see a strong effort of promotional publications that'll be coming out in the next several weeks as we get close to that first week of the program. And I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
I just want to say I think it's great. Nice work, nicely done.
Thank you.
You're not going to let Ron influence any of those decisions, are you?
He had a choice on one of the bands, so.
Knight Rider?
We'll give him one, we'll give him one.
Thank you.
Those are the Wiggles, right?
I grew up in the 90s. I bring a 90s band, you know.
That would work.
Yeah. That is all for us.
All right, great. Commission reports, anybody?
Tonight, when Mr. Hill was speaking, he made a comment that I've heard and we've talked about for a long time. We got about the Apartment Row comment about changing the name. Is that something that we can address? Or how do we go about something like that?
Is it official?
I don't think it's an official.
Greenbrook, I've never seen a Greenbrook sign.
Yeah, there's no Rossmore Highlands sign.
What the hell's Greenbrook?
There's no way to change it. It doesn't exist. I mean, physically. I don't think, I don't think. I don't know that.
At this point.
I don't know that.
I always wondered, because it really...
My neighborhood's the only one labeled suburbia states.
Well, actually... All I can say to keep it really brief is that the staff has talked about that, two items, the signage for the neighborhoods and Apartment Row. So I would just recommend that we just stay tuned.
We have, I'm not saying one way or another, if I like it or don't like it, but we've always brought that up over the years, over the years, you know what I mean, over the decades. We've kind of talked about that signage on places and this and that. That signage might get rid of that stigma. If you did, if you did call it something different and had a sign.
One of our goals here is to check off some of these checkboxes according to our general plan. And the signage that you referred to is part of our general plan. So we're going down that road. Just, you know, we're slowly going. We'll get there.
I'm curious on how you would be able to make signage for it, though. It's not like an enclosed neighborhood like the Highlands or...
Well, it's not so much a signage, just like I live in Old Town West. We always love that. We're in it.
You can add to the street signs, you know, like a little...
Instead of us always referring to it like that, I like to find something more pleasant.
The way these originated, at least, I don't know, this is the absolute truth, but I've been in the real estate business since the early 70s. And a lot of these areas were developed for the multiple listing services, so they'd have borders for just different areas. You go, the Plaza in Long Beach, or, well, Rossmore was Rossmore. He called, you know, and Old Town West. I mean, if you go Country Square to the north, all of these are real estate board designations. Now, I don't know that that's, I suspect that was the genesis of it as these areas developed. I think probably the real estate people got together and they had to have demarcations.
I want to remind the commission that we don't want to go full into this. But, you know, again, this is something that we will probably bring forth in an upcoming planning commission.
So just a reminder, April 17th, we have the Spring Festival at Cottonwood Park for Easter, hint, hint.
Okay. Any other reports? Okay, with that, we'll stand adjourned to our next meeting. That's it. Good evening.